And state your name for the audio record. In the event of an emergency, exit this room utilizing either of the two rear doors, proceed to the main floor and exit the building using the front or the side rear door. Anthony's still with us? Oh, he's coming back, okay. We're going to move to item one, which is Cordis. I guess I'll start. Thank you.
Are you going to read?
Oh. Yeah. Cordis. Do we have notice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, April 26, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the pre-application entitled Cordis Family Trust. The pre-application consists of a standard plan with two lots on a 3,000, no, 3.8454-acre parcel located within the CR40 zoning district located within the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area at 223 Norris Lane, Bridgehampton, Town of Southampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-72-1-3. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Very good.
Good evening. I'm Joe Lombardi from the Reina Group, representing the Cordis Family Trust. And the project sponsor is proposing to subdivide the 3.8454-acre parcel, which is improved with a single-family residence, a cabana, a swimming pool, patios, walks, and a stone drive into two lots. Subject parcel is on the east-lee side of Norris Lane, approximately 496 feet south of Narrow Lane in the CR40 zoning district. Parcel is not in any overlay district. Two lots are proposed. Lot one would have an area of 71,016 square feet and would be vacant. Lot two would contain all of the existing site improvements and have an area of 96,491 square feet. Both lots would be flag lots that would comply with the requirement for flag lots in the CR40 zoning district, that each of them have an area that's 150% of the minimum lot size in the zone. The lots would share a common access on Norris Lane. The subject parcel only has a little over 30 feet of frontage on Norris Lane. The minimum frontage required for two flag lots would be 40 feet. Therefore, variance will be necessary. Public water is not available. Water supply and sanitary systems are subject to approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Cordis Family Trust? Here are no public comment. I'll entertain a motion to close with a 10-day written commentary. Motion by Blaney.
Second.
Second by Robyn. All in favor? Aye. Oppose abstentions?
Aye.
We have six yes. Item two is 34 Cobb Watermill LLC. Do we have notice?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Not yet.
After your question, may I also notice that this is the...
Oh, thank you.
Lorian, are you up for reading? You up for reading?
Yep.
Great. Lorian's going to read.
Notice of a public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, April 26, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the lot line modification application entitled 34 Cobb Watermill LLC. The application consists of a lot line modification which proposes to transfer 30,293.3 square feet from Lot 5 to Lot 6.2 on a total project area of 113,815.3 square feet located within the R40 zoning district within the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area at 30-plus AMP 34 Cobb Isle Road Watermill, Town of Southampton, Suffolk County map number is 900-160-3-5,6.2, and 25.3. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Phil Keith, Secretary.
Hi. This is the applicant, John Bennett. Let me, you only have the map on the wall that shows the property after transfer, so let me show you. This is what the two properties look like now. This one, relatively, rectangular lots. This is what it looks like now. You have the lot to, I guess that's to the east, the flag lot next to it. So, the concept is to, the result is shown up there, but let me, I think this probably shows it best in terms of what is being affected. This portion of this lot, the transfer to this lot, is hopefully actually a much more conforming area, a lot for this lot, and a conforming area...
I know. They can't pick you, not picking you up.
Little more for the mic.
So, I don't know what to tell you to do.
And frankly, I can't see anything this far away, so...
Excuse me?
I can't see what you're looking at.
Come in the middle, Joe.
Okay.
This mic's here.
Come in the middle.
And then we'll be able to...
That's a lot better.
We'll hear you and we'll be able to see you. Their mics on the table.
You know, I like the coding. I know neither. What's I do with that? So, the lot, it currently looks like this. The two lots, one like this is rather long and rectangular, and this is a flag lot, which has a house on it now. It's actually a really wonderful Roger Ferris house. This is the result, which is shown on the wall, but I think graphically, the best way to see it...
But, well, he has no choice.
This mic's on the table.
Oh, is it picking up? Okay.
One Hollywood hit. That's it.
So, this piece is simply going to be transferred to this.
There. Well, that's pretty straightforward, Joe.
Pretty straightforward.
But, that's really all I have to say.
Okay. Well, then, there you go.
As if so, a lot of...
Throw a lot of Latin at us.
Say it into the mic.
Okay, very good. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on 34 Cobb Watermill LLC? Okay. No public comment. I'll entertain a motion to close with a 10-day written commentary.
Motion?
Motion by Jackie.
Second.
Second by Robyn. All in favor? Aye. Oppose abstentions? We have six yes. One absent. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Jackie, you up for reading?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to go to 192 West Montauk Highway.
Sir, do you have an affidavit of posting?
Very good. Load read into the record. You're free to read, Jackie, if you want.
Is it?
Yes. Yeah, we got the...
Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a pre-submission conference will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, April 26, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the pre-submission application entitled 192 West Montauk Highway. The site plan special exception application is for the demolition of an existing car repair shop and construction of a 3,000-square-foot convenience store and gasoline filling station with six pumps on a 90,156-square-foot parcel located in the HB and AMP R40 zoning district and the aquifer protection overlay district and the central pine barrens compatible growth area at 192 Montauk Highway, Hamlet of Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 902213-17. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Good evening. Mark Pallata, Prime Engineering, offices at 664 Blue Point Road, Holtsville, New York. I'd like to start off by just going on the record as we don't believe that any portion of this property is owned residential. We believe that that was an oversight or a mistake in the posting. I believe it's entirely in the highway business and the aquifer protection overlay, so I guess we'll, this is a preliminary meeting, so we're here basically to get feedback from you and...
I know the Stop &amp; Shop, where the Stop &amp; Shop sits was residential. I know that much.
Yes. I mean, I just was looking on my phone at the zoning map, and to me, it appears that it's all in the highway business, so I guess that's something, obviously...
There's a little piece in the back.
Yeah, that's the residential portion.
That's the residential piece. This one, here. This is all HB.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if you're, that's part, it looks like it's part of your...
Yes, it is. The zoning line probably runs through the back of the lot.
The zoning... That is shown, but it's not labeled on the zoning map used. Okay. We are, however, not building in that portion. It is located within the pine barrens, so we have the clearing restrictions on us. The site's approximately two acres, and we're looking to keep the development up front where the, where it's currently the existing automotive service station, which is there, and there's no gas sales there currently, but they do automotive repair. Our application is for a convenience store use. It is 3,000 square feet, 2,000 on the first floor. The plan before you shows a 1,000-square-foot basement, but we have since been thinking of making it a mezzanine level for some storage and having some feedback from planning staff. The architecture we submitted didn't seem to be agreeable to them. They presented to us some samples of other gas stations that have been approved within the town, and we have revised, we are thinking of revising our application. We have some preliminary elevations that are more compatible with things that have been approved, so I can share those tonight with you. Other than that, this, other than the special exception use, we meet most, we meet all the setbacks and parking requirements for the use. We were proposing cross-access with the Stop &amp; Shop, which already has it planned, and also, we're proposing it with the shopping center to the east. If there are any questions or concerns, I'd like to hear them.
If I remember, that previous gas station had a plume that developed.
Mm-hmm.
Gasoline came out of it. You're not going to use their tanks, correct?
No, there are no...
They took them out?
Well, they're actually onsite but above ground, which I'm not sure why that is. There are a set of tanks here, but to my knowledge, there are no tanks. The site was subject to a cleanup that was actually done by the state DEC, and as far as I know, it's been, it's been...
But if there are underground tanks from the previous owner, will you take them out?
Yes. We're proposing new tanks. Everything is brand-new.
Have you had, have you undertaken environmental audit on the property?
Yeah. So, my client, who's the applicant, is looking to purchase the property from the current owner, and they have done a phase-two report.
Environmental report.
Yes, report, yeah.
And the DEC, you have a DEC sign-off on...
To the best of my knowledge. I'd have to confirm that, but to the best of my knowledge and my understanding, it was a sign-off.
We would want that.
Okay.
There's going to be no repair shop, correct? Just gasoline?
Correct. Just gasoline and the convenience store. If you'd like, I'd like to share you the revised elevations, just so you can sort of take a look at...
What's going to be on the second story?
The thought was an office and just storage. It's not actually a second story. I have the project architect, Ron Coppola, with me. I'd like to bring him up, and maybe he could walk us through it a little bit.
Ron Coppola, architect, 24 Neering Avenue, Maplewood, New York, 11702. So, what we are proposing to do is have stairs going up to a second-floor mezzanine, taking what's had over like eight feet down to, you know, five-feet new walls on each side, and using that just basically for storage instead of digging out, since we have the elevations. We made the elevations high enough with the facial line that we could get some storage underneath the roof versus digging out and going down into underneath this. Since we're framing that, it doesn't make sense to dig it out more and make a cellar underneath.
Now, does the canopy for the pumps have a pitched roof?
I think they're just going to be prefab metal ones. Is that correct, Ron?
We're open to whatever your preference is.
Think about maybe replicating the aesthetic you have on the...
We could do a little pitch roof on those, yeah.
But our policy is to go for pitched roofs in a traditional, I mean, if you drive by the Hess Station, I mean, the Speedy Station and some of the local, the Sunoco Station.
And also the Bridgehampton Station. Have you seen those?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
If you're heading back on the North Highway, you can look at the Sunoco, at the light of McKee Street.
Yeah, we could put a small, you know, 6-on-12 pitch roof.
And the pump should be devoid of any signs or anything other than information or like the price.
Yeah, where the prices are.
Right. Also, what are the colors of the building?
We haven't really decided that yet. Most likely, like a gray, a white trim, possibly a black roof.
And that's the stone, there's blue stone on the bottom? You haven't decided?
Maybe like a Westchester type of stone, something that mimics a more traditional look, with like a made-of-blue stone cap on top of it. It's just going to be cultured stone. It's not going to be real stone, obviously. But that Westchester grand look would be nice, more, you know, for tradition.
Various colors.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a site plan question.
Sure.
Is there a reason why you are putting the east parking spaces there rather than trying to double up the, the back area?
Basically, that back area is the limit at which we can clear.
The pine barrens.
Correct. So, basically, if we go, you know, basically 10, 10 to 20 feet off of that rear curb line is all we can clear.
You have the cross-access. Is it all built? Oh, yeah.
So, what is that, the parking space in the very frontier?
There's five with the two...
That's information.
No, it's not in the very frontier. Are those air tanks, air and tires? Please.
Yes.
That's such a busy area, traffic.
Those are, those are just parking stalls that we need for the required parking.
There's no other place you can...
We can landbank them, if you'd like.
I think you'll be busy here.
That's weird.
Okay.
Hold up something we can look at...
Yeah, I mean...
Down the road. But we try very much not to have parking and cars in front of...
It says right-of-way on it.
We try to accommodate it in the rear.
I mean, there's 35 stalls proposed. That's, in my professional opinion, do a lot of gas stations, that's a lot of parking for a gas station. I mean, it may be busy, but it would probably be predominantly busy with selling gas.
Well, you know, what happens a lot, too, and I don't know that people take it into consideration, some of the landscaping trucks are doubly long because it's a truck, and then it's almost the length of a horse trailer that they're, and so some of these spaces are inadequate for the length of those vehicles. We're seeing that more and more.
And they're parking in, in stalls?
Well, they're coming, coming into the convenience store to get something to eat or...
Yeah, they'll typically park up against the building, right? Because they're not pulling into the parking stall. Is that you...
Well, it's the length of the parking stall.
Hmm.
But again, this is something that we can work out.
Yeah.
Your access to the east crosses a right-of-way. Do you have, do you know the ownership, or do you have the...
We do not. That's just something, there was, there was comments from planning staff that cross-access would be something they would, would want, so we were just sort of planning for it. Whether or not we can get in touch with adjacent owners, obviously, I think with the Stop &amp; Shop, we're pretty in good shape. It appears it's almost built out to our property line.
Is that right-of-way, is that part of Stop &amp; Shop?
No, I believe that's owned by the town. I believe it's some sort of preserved area.
The right-of-way?
Yeah. I believe it goes back to, it's kind of, it's kind of a flag lot. I think it had to do when, when Stop &amp; Shop maybe was developed, that they preserved that area just to the east of it.
Yeah.
So, you don't know the ownership of that eastern parcel?
It says now we're formally property of Caffrey.
That's, that's as much as I know.
Now, we're formally owned by William Caffrey.
So, yeah.
Well, that's always what it says.
That's going to be able to do cross-access across...
His right-of-way?
A right-of-way.
Well, if it's owned by the town, then we can.
So, we'll have to look into the ownership.
Do you think the town owns this strip?
We don't know.
I don't know.
We'll have the planners look into that.
The planners will look at it.
Okay.
That's you.
Are there other questions for the applicant?
Nope. That seems to be a very busy area to have.
Certainly, yes.
I mean, traffic, I think, is something we need to think about.
Yeah. That was that, when the Stop &amp; Shop was set up, it anticipated that cross, to take some pressure off Montauk Highway, because it's a very distressed intersection.
It's not...
So, it would be nice to get that activated.
The cross-access would help, but...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I would also say that gas stations typically don't generate traffic. They're pass-by use. You don't wake up in the morning and say, "I'm going to go to that nice new gas station that I approved," you know, last month, right?
I actually do, but that's...
Bad example, that. Typically, it'll just be taking traffic that's already a long route, so...
What is the ratio of parking? You say you do a lot of gas stations. What's the ratio of parking that you are most familiar with, that you think is appropriate?
That, that I think is, well, it depends on, it depends on the seastore size, obviously, and then there are a few maybe stations that are exceptions that are really busy, but usually like one per 300 is adequate. Because in reality, the stalls are really, the fueling positions also act as spaces. Whether or not the town counts them or not is another aspect of the code, but in reality, people who are fueling also go in to pay, although that's less these days with, with cards and apps on your phone and things like that, but they do after they're done fueling or before they start fueling, they'll go in and buy what they need and go out.
So, one per 300 is your...
That would be mine.
Typical.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good questions. Okay, at this time, is there anyone who wishes to be heard on the matter of 192 West Montauk Highway?
Yes. Sure.
Hi, good evening. I'm an attorney, Erin Sedaris, with the Law Office of Farrell Fritz. We were recently retained also to join in assisting on this application, so any of the legal questions, right-of-way things, we're happy to look into that for you. So, if you have any other of those questions that we can be helpful with, we're happy to do that.
Do you have any knowledge of the right-of-way?
I don't. We literally were just retained, so, but I'm happy to look into it for you, sure.
Great. If you could just print your name on the sign-in sheet.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Any additional comments of 192 West Montauk Highway? Here are no additional comments. I'll entertain a motion to close with a 30-day written commentary for pre-submission. Motion by Blaney.
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor? Aye. Oppose abstentions? We have six yes. Item four is the matter of Hay Ground School. Do we have notice, Chancellor? Whoops.
We do, Mr. Chairman.
We do. Robyn, are you up for reading?
Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, April 26, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. prevailing time at Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled Hay Ground School, Art and Science Building. The site plan application is for 59, 5,980-square-foot classroom space addition to an existing school on a 12.76-acre parcel in the CR80 zoning district, aquifer protection overlay district, agricultural overlay district on the east side of Mitchell and 39th, Number 39 Lane, and the west side of Butter Lane, Hamlet of Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 968-1-7.4. The project meets the criteria for classification as an unlisted action pursuant to Article 8 SECRA of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and pursuant to Chapter 157 Environmental Quality Review of the Southampton Town Code. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Phil Keith, Secretary.
Joe Lombardi from the Reina Group, representing the Hay Ground School. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-story building addition that will house classrooms for the arts and sciences program. Footprint of the building, including the roof overhangs, is 3,538 square feet. When completed, lot coverage will be 6.8%. The maximum lot coverage in the CR80 zone is 10%. The proposed arts and science building will have two floors. The gross floor area is 5,600 square feet. There's no anticipated increase in the number of students, faculty, or staff as a result of the proposed expansion. The existing school has, is served by public water, and the addition naturally would be served by public water also. Sanitary waste for the proposed addition, we piped to a new sanitary system. The application has been made, an application has been made to Suffolk County Department of Public Service, Department of Health Services. We've received comments from both the town engineer and the health department and are ready to address them, but we were waiting for the outcome of tonight's meeting, see if there are any other items that needed to be addressed, and we can address everything at once. Any questions?
I think we had this, we had a work session.
Yeah, and there was a pre-application hearing also.
Oh, there was a pre-application. Is this, this is a public site plan hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, isn't there a swimming pool on this property?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, you're showing it.
There's a greenhouse. There's about a greenhouse.
The project architect, David Beridge, is here if you have any questions about the architecture.
Sure. Mr. Beridge?
Welcome to...
Oh, yeah. This might be easier.
This is just an updated couple of building sections and elevations. In the original comments from the planner, they had voiced some concerns about the architecture, and we did a preliminary review with the AIB. and we did a preliminary review with the ARB, and they said, "No, you're on the right track. Don't worry about it. We've got no complaints, so we continue with the building as drawn." The concept of the building is basically these two equal classrooms, science and art. They interchange within the school curriculum, and then having a third teaching area, which is the outdoor roof, which is going to be a green roof because they do a lot of science and growing and planting, so the three level... Three classrooms are basically going to be the two indoor and the one outdoor, hence the flat roof on the top. And it's adjacent to the existing dining hall, which is sort of the heart and soul of the school, and that's what I call the temple of the school. The idea of this building is to make sure that it's subservient to that building, so it's sunk down into the land. The existing... This is the existing dining hall that had an addition onto it about three years ago, so the new building will actually sit lower than this structure. And I've got samples of materials, whatever, if you want. You know, the essence of the school is they're, you know, very focused on the environment and all the current things to do. You know, they've got solar lighting, which will match and all that kind of thing. It'll be a flat roof, and it will have plantings up there where students can go up and study plant life, and we'll actually try and get it as green as possible without having it green.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on the app chasing the Hay Ground School? No public comment. I'll entertain a motion to close with a 10-day written comment period.
Motion?
Motion by Blaney.
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? Six yes. Thank you very much. There's a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
By Zuccarelli.
Second.
Second by Lorian. We are adjourned.